That's it.
I'll be a little bit more specific. One of your partners used to be a superintendent here.
Right.
And what role will he play in the process?
Probably the only thing he would do is when we have some candidates, we might say, "Do you know anything about this person's background?" Because he knows people all over the state. Who are some of the people we could talk to to find out about this person? So we use each other in terms of finding other folks in previous districts a person might be in to be able to talk to them. But that would be the role that he would play. We've had a couple of searches frankly in the past where a superintendent in our group had been the superintendent and sometimes the board said, "We'd really like that person not to be involved." Because they were worried about bias and we said, "They won't be involved. We won't even talk to them about this and just say, 'You're out of this one entirely.'" So-
And given your direction, at the most, that partner wouldn't be any more involved than any of the other nine.
Right.
At the highest level. But if you directed us not to have any involvement, that's what we do.
Sure. Community forums, bringing the top two or three candidates to the community for an interview, open forum, what's your company's position on something like that?
We believe very firmly in a confidential search, which means the board selects the candidates to interview and the board interviews the candidates. Couple of reasons for that, couple of real significant reasons for that. One is, we believe our job is to bring you the very best candidates. If people are going to be part of a public forum, they won't apply. And we have endless examples of that. And the other thing is a philosophical position that we have, and that is, the board was elected to do this very important job of selecting a superintendent, of evaluating the superintendent, and keeping or not keeping the superintendent. And we don't think that that should be delegated. The candidates want to know who it is that they're really working for, and that's you. But fundamentally, if it's not a confidential search, and I can give you very specific examples, some top people will not apply. Not just because of their own careers, but because they don't want to hurt the district that they're in. Because if somebody thinks they're applying for something, the turmoil starts. Oh, is somebody leaving and whatever. And one particular example I'll give you, which is illustrative, is a superintendent was very interested in this district that we were doing, but said, "We're in the middle of a bond election. If my name gets out, I'll withdraw because I don't want anything to hurt this bond from passing." So it was about trying to protect that district that he was in currently, and then, but also still interested in the new district.
If we wanted to have a community forum for the top two or three, should we even think about hiring you?
No.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much. One other thing, compensation package. Will you give us guidance as to what a proper compensation package might be for candidates?
Absolutely. We can give you comparatives on what's going on traditionally. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Parker?
Thank you. And thank you fellow board members. And you, because you answered a lot of the questions that we had, and I appreciate that, that you did that right in your presentation. Couple of questions. One is how you handle the references in a little bit more detail. Do the references from candidates, do they come to you and to the board from the candidate themselves? And how do you interact with the references in terms of checking them?
A couple of phases to that. One, they will have reference letters, and we will receive those reference letters. We will also call a number of people that are not on the reference letter. And we may call the people on the reference letter for clarification. But in the packet, you will get two things. You will get their letters of reference that they chose. But there's always the question, who did they ask for letters of reference, of course? So we make sure that we ask other people, lots of other people, that know and have worked with the person for references. We put those in a confidential packet and you get that. So we share that with you, so that you know how that's happening. It's all private, it's all confidential, but you'll get those two types of references on candidates. We also will bring you data, if in our LexisNexis search, you get a little better profile of the person, because there are articles about that person's achievements, or any issues that may have come up in the district, we'll bring you those as well. So you'll see, you know, a nice little book on what the candidates have done, what people say they've done, et cetera.
Okay. And another question, just going into a little bit more detail. Locally, you've worked with Montecito, Galida, Santa Maria, San Ynez. I know that there are specific board members that may or may not eventually, you know, in the long term like their hires, but everybody's been very positive about the process with you. Ms. Limon was asking about your one-year guarantee. Do you have a specific example of a hire that didn't go well? And how exactly you handled it?
Unfortunately. It was a district that after about six months, it looked like it was not going to be a match. And it was something that nobody could have predicted and everybody was shocked by. And so there was a separation agreement, and we went back and helped them find another superintendent for no cost. And that superintendent has been there seven years.
Okay.
I think many of my questions have already been asked and answered. So I'm just going to follow up on maybe a couple. You talked about your, the process that you would use in helping to do outreach and recruitment for a diverse pool of candidates. How successful have you been in placing, in actually accomplishing diverse hires?
We've been very successful. We have a number that we've placed in different districts. Two in the LA area in the last year or so that were diverse the year before, one in Temple City. We've had good luck with that. We have a whole list of that, of, you know, if we, we don't have the report in front of us, but quite a few. We've had great luck. And one of the things that we really do, if you want someone of diverse background in addition to the groups that kind of have their focus on that, is we work with county superintendents. We'll call the county superintendents. And they typically know all the superintendents in their county and will say, just confidentially ask, "Is there anyone that you believe is one of your strong players, leaders in the county and that is, you know, of a different ethnic background or race or whatever you choose? But somebody that would fit well based on the profile." So we've had great luck with that. And the pool isn't as great, as you well know, as we'd like it to be. So we knock on every door and make sure that we do that. We're, we've done that recently quite a bit, in fact, because there is, you know, districts that have high ELL populations want someone that they believe can relate to their community. And sometimes they want someone that's Hispanic or Latino. And so we will do that recruitment. Anything else?
And then there are many, many more that were applicants that the board did not select. So there's a difference between those that were selected in the applicant pool, which is broader, of course. But we also really believe that we're going to bring you the very best candidates regardless of anything else that matched the profile, and that that's our number-one job for you.
Great. And then I also want to follow up on something that you mentioned. You talked about the site visit. And I inferred from what you were saying that you recommend a site visit for just the top candidate that we find? So then if the site visit were to prove unsatisfactory, we would then look at, initiate a site visit for our next candidate, et cetera?
You might. It would depend on where you ended up in terms of the finalists, and that would be something that we would have to discuss. And actually, that site visit is a confirming visit, so that you can be comfortable that everything that you think is what is actually happening. And our experience has been that boards come back even more excited than before because they've talked to people, have worked with them, and so on. And we have not had any that have not worked out in all of our searches. There was one where the board was still split and the finalist said they would not take it on a split vote. So that was, so the finalist withdrew in that situation. But we, depending on how you got to that finalist and who else was still in the pool and so on, then would determine what your next steps would be.
If I can just follow up on that. I have been on site visits where it seemed like things were going extremely well and then ultimately the hire did not work out. Do you work with boards to help, for lack of a better term, trainers on how to conduct a site visit so that it is effective?
Absolutely. Well, you know, we recognize that if the candidate lines up the people you're going to talk to, and you don't get to talk to a diverse group of different people from different roles, you're just going to get one story. So we will work with you on making sure that the group that you're going to visit is the right group. We also encourage you, if you choose to, to go away from the formal meeting, talk to anyone that you can on that site visit to make sure you have all the information that you need. So it isn't just that one piece of information that you're getting. But we do orient you and train you on how that is and work with the candidate and you to make sure that the right group is there that really gives you the information that you need.
And one other piece, it kind of goes back to the question about the community involvement. And that is, if you choose, you could bring members, a couple of members of the community that represent certain kinds of groups. You'd want to be sure who it was that they were representing, whether it was the PTA Council or something like that. Sometimes boards take the head of the teachers' association or the classified association. That's up to you. And we don't go on that visit. You would go on that visit to do your confirming. We would help you set it up, but we wouldn't be there because it's your confirming visit. And you can take whoever you'd like to take on that visit.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions?
I may have missed this, but what's the average applicant pool size that you have? What, that you might expect?
You know, it varies. But I would say for your size of district, if you had 20 applicants, that would be a lot at this point. Because the larger the district, probably a little bit smaller the pool tends to be. Because you need to have more kind of experiences in a variety of situations in larger, you know, smaller, larger districts, to be able to deal with the district your size with the complexity of it. But that's where the recruiting is so important, because it's less important how many as to what the quality of the pool is. And if you just left it to advertising, the quality of the pool would be much less than it would be by going out and targeting people.
Thank you.
I'll give you an example. A district in San Diego County just did their search on Ed Join. They had 80-some applicants, but they weren't people that were really qualified to be a superintendent, because anybody could apply. So you, and anybody can apply for this as well, but they know that it's serious business and they better have the qualities of a superintendent. Because if you just put it out there, there are people, especially even outside of education, that maybe have run companies and believe, "Hey, I can run that district." What's the size of their budget? "Okay, I can do, I did that with my company." That's a non-traditional candidate. And if there are good ones, we'd want to bring them to you if you chose to see that. But you'll get a lot of those kinds of people. Charter school leaders that will apply for the superintendency when it's just out publicly. So that's where the recruitment and making sure that the people that put their application in are the right ones. We don't, again, exclude anybody from applying, but they understand what the qualifications are that you're looking for. So it's real. You really get a real pool of candidates. The longer list, the shorter, the shorter, the shorter, right to your successful superintendent. And that's a fun day.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there, oh, Mr. Herrn?
Two things. How much time do you think you'll spend in our community getting this profile put together?
Well, we would spend the time with you, and then we would spend a day or two getting the staff and community input. We found when you tighten that and focus on a day or day and a half or two days, you get a lot more input than if you kind of spread it out. People go, "Oh, I'll go the next time," or "I'll go the next time." Besides which, there's a timeline, because you're going to want to meet a certain timeline to get the position description put together, and then to be able to post it, and then to have your closing date and all of that kind of thing. So it needs to be quick and it needs to be targeted.
Okay. If we think a candidate has a background in special education, do you have the capability of helping us ferret that up?
Yep. Those are all the kinds of things that we would ask you. What are the issues or, you know, experiences that you would really like to see? And you'll develop what looks like, like, could anybody do this job? Because it's all these ideals. But, you know, you want to list everything that's possible, and then you sort out of the candidates who can match these the best, and which are the most critical for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any additional questions for our presenters? No? Okay. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your time in applying your original proposal, and we appreciate your time coming here tonight. We will be making our decision very quickly, we hope to, so you should hear back from us in a very brief amount of time.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. So I think we made up a little bit of our time that we went over on our break. Our next presentation will be from Dave Long and Associates, and I believe they will be Thank you for joining us. Good evening.
Well, thank you for having us come and for what must be a long day for you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. We're used to long meetings, so.
Well, Board, we have Dave Long and Bill Diedrich. And we've set this up so that you have about 15 minutes to present to the board, and then we'd like to let the board ask questions of you.
Great. Well, thank you so much for allowing us to be here. And as Bill said, I'm sure that this has been a long day, but as you indicated, you're used to these. Since we have the 15 minutes and you have the proposal in front of you, we're going to go through just a few of the items, and then what we're really interested in is getting at the discussion and the questions and the answers. Our company, DLA, has been in existence about two years. And I say that because we're all doing other things. And we all came together, meaning about six or seven of us. Now, about four or five of the members of the firm were with CSBA. And then CSBA did away with searches. So I was working in Sacramento, so pulled what we thought were the top four or five people from CSBA to come and work with one or two of us that were starting out the company. So for two years now, we've been doing the searches. It is a cadre of very experienced consultants, as I just indicated. They've had a, quite an assembly of experiences in the past. We've done over 50 or 60 searches in the last four or five years. When I say four or five, I mean from the, that's why I wanted to explain it, from the previous experiences plus the current experiences. And that's very important, because they are very experienced in, or we are, in process and the network that is out there across the state of California and the United States. Because of the people that we work with and are involved with DLA, we have contacts up and down the state of California, and as I indicated, across this great nation. As you know, and you've been involved with us now for a number of hours, you've been thinking about this for months, you make a lot of very difficult decisions, and you have a lot of very important discussions. The one that you're having now, and the one that you're going to, the decision you're just going to be making, is perhaps the most important decision that you will make as a board. Some of you might be sitting there, "Well, with the budget situation going on, that's the most important." It is chaotic. We all know that. But that's why this decision is so very, very critical. Because that will be your partner in making decisions for the children of this district. So I could talk about that for five minutes, but you know that in your heart of hearts that this is so extremely important. And we want to, we would like to be a part and a partner with you to make that very important decision. I do want to, when I say partner, I want to, we're very open, we're very honest, and Jerry Fawcett is sitting in the audience, she's an interim here in this district. Jerry Fawcett also has done some screening for us as a company. So I just want you to know that she has acted as a screener for DLA for some superintendent searches. I'm just saying that so that it's full disclosure. And I mentioned laying things out on the table. This is a very important decision for you, but at the same time, it's just like interviewing the superintendent when you talk with different firms and representatives of those firms. You have to feel very comfortable. Because as you work through the process, you're going to have to trust each other in what is said, you'll respect the things that are said in the process and working through very difficult decisions together. So it's, that's why that decision is very difficult and very important for you. Just a few quick things about us, then I'm going to have Bill come up and talk about some of the process, then we'll get right to that very important part, which is the question, answer, and the discussion. We are California-based. We are all Californians, with the six of us that work in the search part of the firm. However, each of us have a network across the United States. We have, as I've mentioned before, we have wide experience, and we have a trail of success, and that trail of success is 95 percent. Which means that those that we've placed in the last five years, 95 percent of them are still in those positions. And that's a very important figure to think about as you make the selection. We also, because, I guess of the chaotic finances that we have out there, there will be a lot of these coming up in the state of California, meaning superintendent searches, anticipating 80 to 100 of them in the next 12 months out of the 1,018 districts in the state of California. That is extreme. And the reason that I mention that, in our firm, we always limit the leads so that they are not overburdened, so that they can exercise high quality in working with each of the districts. We bring a full team to the table, meaning we don't just have one or two people working with you. There might be one or two leads, which there will be, and Bill will explain that. But everyone pulls in behind, we have three secretaries, and we have our network, and we have the six consultants that all work together. We guarantee our work, and Bill will also be explaining that guarantee. And I think this day and age, that's very important. And lastly, as I turn it over to Bill, and we were just discussing this out here as we were waiting, for us, education's been very good to us, to both of us. So for Bill Diedrich and Dave Long and the others that we work with, doing these searches is like payback time for us, for education, to find that perfect match for a district and working with the board to make those very difficult decisions for the children of your district. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bill. I'm trying to be very conscious of the 15 minutes so we can get to that discussion. Thank you so much.
And I see we have nine minutes left. So let's move right along. As Dave said, we do this mainly as a labor of love. Heaven knows we probably could be doing other things, but I had 40-plus years in education, 25 as a superintendent, and I have a very special feeling for school boards and school districts and superintendents still having some involvement with CSBA. Wanted to just hit the highlights of what we do. I know you've been listening to presentations, you're going to think, "Okay, I heard that before." Or, "Okay, I heard that before." I'm going to try to highlight the things we think we do differently for you, as well as some of the things we may do like others. I think I'll start off with our accountability to you. We're not going to come in here with a formula approach and say, "Here it is, take it or leave it. If you don't like the way we do a search, tough rocks, this is your choice." We're not going to come to you with a cadre of people that are, some refer to as a stable. Every search we do is brand-new. We start out working with you and developing a leadership profile. We talk with the community members. We talk with you individually. We talk with key stakeholders throughout the districts. Always employee organization leaders. Always, if possible, in a unified district, students. We also talk with teachers. We talk with, we spend three days with you. We have an open evening forum where people can come. We have it in English and in Spanish. We develop all kinds of methods for input, such as questionnaires, both English and Spanish. We have flyers that we send and make available to you. If it's possible, we ask to get on your website, so it's well-noticed, also on your local newspapers. We set up our own website where people, if they don't want to meet with us, they can still put the information in. We do telephone calls. I've talked with people in Germany that were on vacation. They so much wanted to have their input. And we talked, long distance, in terms of time differences, but we didn't. We also provided opportunities for people to write us letters and all of that. When we finish with that, we develop what we call a leadership profile. After your input, after the input of the stakeholders, we compare notes, and we'll say, "You know what? This is what the stakeholders are saying. You guys may have a little bit different take on it, and we share that with you." Quite honestly, most of the time, you're dead-on, both of you. And that becomes the leadership profile. It's the qualities, the traits, the experience level that you would be looking for in your next superintendent. You approve that, and it goes on our website, as well as school services. It would go on the AASA website for national searches. It would also be on your website if you were able to do so. The point is, the word starts to get out. We also make contact with all of our associates and all of our consultants, and we tell them, "This is what the Santa Barbara Unified School District is looking for in terms of a leader. Let's start comparing notes on who we know that meets this profile." And we always say to people, "Don't start with the individual and then look at the job." We start with the job and see if the individual can fit it. We think that's an important distinction. We, Dave mentioned our network. We're all connected nationally, as well as within California, most of us, except these, we two. He came from Iowa and I was in Michigan, except I was in California first. We had experience in other places, but we all are involved in national networks of one kind or other. Also with CAUSA, the California Association of Latino Superintendents. And my point is, we have a broad network of contacts, so we can recruit people. And we're not looking for people who are looking for a job. We're looking for people who meet that profile, who could be working now, and we're going to try to recruit them for you. We do very thorough reference checks. We, I think, are one of the few firms that use outside screeners. Once we have identified a cadre of people that meet your profile, whatever that number is, we do deep background checks, and we use professional screeners to do that. And these people have contacts that they could get information from people that you can't. And you all know, there's a little game people play. They try to get rid of people they don't particularly want, and they'll give them glowing reviews. We get beyond that. We talk to people not only that are known by the, or referred to us by the candidate, but then when we talk to others, and we have so many contacts, we'll just say, "Hey, I know this guy, and I know somebody that knows him." So we do a deep background check on them. We then come back and we report to you. We say, "Here's a field of candidates we recommend. This is what we found out about them." And we share that with you and say, "We're recommending these people for an interview? What do you say?" And if you feel, as I said at the outset, this is your search, you know, we'd like to talk with this person and that person instead, we'll do it. And we'll tell you if we have concerns about them, we'll be open and honest with you. Now, how would you know who applied? Well, that's because we make all of the application materials available to the school board. Every paper that we receive, you get a copy of. There's no hidden agendas. You see exactly who's applying, and you're going to see what our take on those individuals are. You're going to hear about the deep background checks and what we recommend in terms of an interview and so forth. And all of that is focused on how well it meets the profile that you've established, you and your community. Once you've identified the candidate, the top candidate, and we can talk about that in a little bit, because I'm sensitive to the time, once you've identified that person, we do yet one more background check. This one is federal, state, county, and local criminal, driving, and business background check. Also academic records. We don't want somebody to, and it's happened- We don't want somebody to, and it's happened before unfortunately, where somebody has represented to you, they have a doctorate from XYZ University, and you share that with your community, and somebody does a little checking and finds out, yeah, they attended, they took one class there, but they didn't get a doctorate. We want you to know upfront that this is absolutely pristine in every regard. Once you've identified the individuals, then we also recommend a community visit. Not necessarily the whole board, unless it's in Hawaii, then we get a lot of interest in that, but it, we're looking really for you to verify everything we've been saying. We help you with the identification of questions, we also will be present, of course, during the interview process and work with you. We also, very early in the process, ask you to start thinking about contract provisions. That's an important part, and we've often met with your legal counsel. We know what superintendents would like to see in their contracts, we want to hear what you see, and sometimes we have to, you know, work back and forth. I've, in many occasions, told superintendent candidates, this isn't going to fly, just forget it. The board's very clear about this, this, this. In the same token, we can say to you, you know, you might want to think about this provision again, or here's a twist to it, but in the final analysis, we always recommend that you meet with your counsel. That's who you really should have, give the final approval to this. Throughout the process, we communicate with you every other week, if sometimes every week. You'll each get an email from me, and you'll get it so you can see exactly where we are in the process. Toward the end of the process, there's a downtime while we're recruiting, and I'll merely give you updates on that. But it's a, we want to communicate. If you have a question, you can call us, and we will answer your question. We'll do one other thing. We'll share your question with the rest of the board and say, we had a question from Dr. Sarvis, and we'd like to share that with the rest of you, and this is the answer. That way, you're all on the same page, no one's getting any information that is unique to them. Everybody's getting the same kind of information. We guarantee our work. If you're not satisfied with the field of candidates that we've brought to you, we'll go out and do it all again. We won't charge you anything except our expenses, and we keep those to a bare minimum. We also, once you've selected a candidate, if it's one that we've done the background checking and we have vouched for, then we guarantee that if during the first year it doesn't work out, and the board hasn't changed, we'll do another search for expenses only. So that's a pretty good guarantee. We also, Dave mentioned our, our, I don't know, I'll get it in a minute, our guarantee. I've talked about our success rate. I think it's pretty impressive, 95 percent of the superintendents that boards have selected and working with our consultants, after five years are still on the job. It's not a hundred percent because unfortunately, some of them want to retire, and we've lost a couple through that process. One other thing that we do at the end of our search, and we feel this is extraordinarily important, we know from our experience that if things are going to go awry, they generally start out in small incremental steps almost the minute the new superintendent comes aboard. And for that reason, we like to get everybody on the same page right at the beginning. And so we offer included in the contract, a leadership transition workshop. And in that, we'll come in and we'll work with the school board and the new superintendent to help them reach common agreements about how they're going to interact one with the other, what a role and responsibilities of each, what are some common values that you're going to have, what are some norms and protocols that you're going to observe as you interact one with the other, and reach agreements on short and long-range goals and objectives that you're going to set. For example, where do you want us all to be in six months? You know? So we, we, that workshop we find is very, very important. And finally, and I'm going to stop there, our costs are all-inclusive. Whatever you see, we've, we've quoted you, we're not going to come back and say, you know what, we ran into some additional expenses and we need more. Everything we say we do, and everything that's included in our proposal is, is as per quoted, and there will be no additional charges. That's it. If we miss it, he eats it. Otherwise, it's, it's just as we stated. I think I'm about two minutes over, and I apologize for that. I'm going to shut up now and let you ask some questions.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Mr. Herron, would you like to begin again?
Thank you. Just, I know in your report you are not a fan of community forums for the final two or three candidates, but can you just let us know for the record that that's the case?
We don't recommend, and actually, we call them superintendent selection advisory committees, where stakeholders come in and they interview. Some boards want every candidate interviewed, is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about just a community forum, so the community can come together and ask questions.
We support them. I, I don't believe we said we were opposed to it. We found that, that we don't get a big turnout. I think the most I ever had in a community forum was about forty, thirty-eight of whom were government students from a class at the high school, and they received extra credit, and I had to sign their, their paperwork for that.
It might be different in Santa Barbara, go ahead.
Well, yeah, okay. But we do offer them, and it's part of it, that we've, we've included with this, and we'd be happy to do it.
Okay, I'm talking about a forum where you bring the top two candidates in, and the audience gives questions to the-
Oh, that, excuse me, sir, I'm sorry. No, we're not a big fan of that.
That's why I was going like that. Yeah, I was wondering, I didn't think I got the answer.
No, no, you didn't, because I didn't understand the question. No, we're opposed to it, there goes confidentiality. One of the things we talk about is, why are we able to get strong seated superintendent candidates? Because we can guarantee confidentiality, you give us your word, if you use another kind of committee, they give us their word. Once we do that, phone calls are made to the seated superintendent's district, they have a pretty rough lot after that. So no, we're not in favor of that.
Thank you.
Ms. Lamont?
Thank you. You, you talked about networks being really important, and the, the both of you are not California-based now, so what would you specifically do to increase the California network for the applicant pool? Because all states are different, and California is unique in its own challenges, and it would be nice to have-
If I gave you the impression we're not California-based, I went to Bell Gardens High School, Montebello Unified School District, I am California-based, and I maintain a network here. And I think we're doing a pretty good job of that networking. Our associates are involved in various ethnic groups and things like that, and professional organizations. Are we doing all we could? We, we're always working on it, but I think we're doing a pretty good job. When we look back at our previous searches, we've done a very good job with that, I believe. Go ahead.
And I also wanted to, I'm also California-based, I've been here for twenty-one years now. When Bill said I came from Iowa, that was in my previous life as a teacher and principal and through the ranks, but superintendent in Banning for a number of years, Lake Elsinore in the South County, county superintendent Riverside for nine years, and then in Sacramento, secretary for two years. So I am also California. But when we say California, it's also important, from the standpoint of a national search, connected with the intermediate agency association across the United States, I was on the board. So when we do national searches, and the board wishes to have that, we simply go to that association, then work down through the states. So we have both sides of that.
Well, thank you for the clarification. Another question I have is about the applicant pool itself. How would you ensure, and if you could be specific, that would be helpful, that there would be a diverse applicant pool?
Well, again, we use our full network of our, I indicated the linkages that we have with our consultants, and as well as with our associates, and the organizations we belong to, and we go out and actively recruit them. Once you've identified your profile, see, the profile's what drives it. And, and in that profile, you're telling us what we should be looking for. So that, that's a short answer. Also, we teach at the university level, we have contacts through them, California School Boards Association, la da 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 da. We do keep informed, as well as CAUSA and other organizations.
And what I, what I hear and what we all know as Californians, our youngsters come from, our student population is very diverse, so we will bring to you that same diversity in the pool. Must reflect.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Parker?
You have answered a lot of questions along the road, so thank you. Can you go into a little bit more detail about how you handle references? Do the references from your candidates, do they come from the candidate to you? Do they come straight from the reference? How do you handle the, the background check on a person-by-person basis?
Let's say that we've identified based on the profile that you've adopted seven or eight people, okay? Ms. Parker is one of them. What we're going to do is call Ms. Parker, the very first thing we do, and find out, are you still interested in the position? Okay? If you are, are you still under contract for next year? We like to know that you're not being fired and you're desperately looking for other work, if we don't already know you. We also will then ask for some references. Before we do that even, we, we've Googled you, we've done that quick background check, in some cases, other forums, but mostly Google, so that we look for start kinds of things. And then we ask for references, you've already provided them on your resume, we ask for five current letters, that means they're not over a year and a half old, that people can speak to your skills and so forth, and then you provide references. Then we begin calling those. One of the things I ask you, excuse me, one of the things we ask you is, would it bother you if we talked with people who aren't on your reference list? If the answer to that is no, we got a real problem. Most people will say, no, go ahead. And then we begin calling some of those people who are on the list. Frequent will say, okay, you've given a glowing report of Ms. Parker, isn't there anybody in that district? I mean, if she's done her job, they're not going to like her. How do, how do you rate that? Well, yeah, you know, the head of the union wasn't real crazy about a decision she made, great, could I have her name and number? And we just kind of network and chain, chain-link through that whole thing, so that we've talked with the county superintendents, we've talked with neighboring superintendents. Most of the time, we know people that know people, and we can get information that you probably couldn't get, because they trust us.
Okay, thank you. And one other question, you've only been really in business for two years, I don't know if you have any specific examples of superintendent searches that did not work out, where you did have to go back within a year and redo the search? Has that happened for you yet? And if so-
No, I haven't had one.
Okay.
I haven't had one. I had one, I had one when I was working with CSBA, one of the first searches I ever did, where I gave the board some recommendations about how to post and what the salary should be and that, and they felt, you know, this is such a wonderful district, people will pay to come here. Turned out, people didn't want to pay to go there, and we didn't get a hot field for that one. I wish now, looking back, and I learned a valuable lesson as one of my first searches, you better tell the board straight up what you're thinking, and they can make a wise decision, and we'll go from there. So my searches, I haven't had any that have gone south, in fact, we've provided some for you, you're more than welcome to contact them, and I think they'll give you a pretty good indication of how well we do.
Thank you.
Did you want to say, sorry?
Yeah, I'm-
Clear your throat.
The two years, but again, to go back to what I mentioned earlier, we were all doing searches in different experiences. As county superintendent, I was doing searches. The rest of them were with CSBA, so collectively, we did fifty or sixty of them. As we've come together in the last two or two and a half years, we've done about twenty or twenty-five of them.
If there's one thing I'd like to dispel, it would be the notion that we're new to this business. I've been doing this for over ten years. And I started with CSBA as a screener, and then worked all the way through. And when CSBA said, we're getting out of the search business, we said, you know, we really like what we're doing, let's take the three or four that we consider to be top people, and let's go join this guy, he's got a good reputation, former Secretary of Education for the State of California, got a lot of good contacts up and down the state, as well as nationally, it would make a nice firm. And we also have other parts of the firm that we do more than just executive searches, as you can see. So it's worked out really well, but we've been doing searches, if we take all of our consultants and form them, it's been decades that we've been doing these things.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. I have actually a few questions, and one quick comment at the beginning, and that is just, especially as we're talking about references, I was disappointed that your proposal didn't include any letters of recommendation, and I would have certainly liked to have seen some of those. But just to touch on the questions, a couple of things that you mentioned, one is the site visit, and I, in your presentation, I believe that you said you would help sort of the board conduct the site visit, help with the questions, but you don't actually participate in the visit itself, do you?
No, if you want us to, we, I say we normally don't do it, but if you want us to go, we'll go.
Oh, okay.
Normally, at that point, you form this new relationship, you have the superintendent, and you have the board, and they together work out the site visit, and sometimes we get to be, you know, a third thumb.
Okay.
So we, we allow that to, that's really one of the first things you kind of do together, and it works out pretty well.
Great. I also had a question about, you mentioned that you do up to two years of sort of follow-up or sort of keeping in touch with the superintendent once the person is placed. What is the nature of the follow-up contact that you have with the superintendent?
Very informal. We will meet with board members that we see at meetings, we will phone-call them, we'll meet with superintendents that call us, or we call them, just to see how things are going. In fact, did any of you go to the CSBA conference? We have a booth there, I can't tell you how many board members and superintendents came up, and we chit-chatted, and we'd been, we'd talked on the phone and that sort of thing. So it's not, you know, we will watch you, we're keeping a close eye on you. It's, it's an informal thing, but we do, we take this pretty personal. If, if that superintendent doesn't work out, Bill Dietrich, if he's the lead, feels that I failed you in some way, and that bothers me. So we're really dedicated to seeing that that relationship gets off to a good start and is maintained.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The other question I had about, was about your agreement that if the candidate pool, initial candidate pool is unsatisfactory, that you will continue the search with, for only expenses. How is it typically determined whether the pool is satisfactory or not?
You tell us.
Okay, so all we have to do is say, we're not satisfied with this, and that?
Don't like it.
Okay.
Don't like it. I hope you tell me a little more than that.
[laughing]
I'd like to hear why, because we take a great deal of pride when we bring those candidates. We're not going to bring you nine candidates, knowing only three meet your profile, that's not going to happen. You're going to get exactly what we think you're looking for. If that's four, it's four. If it's eight, it's eight.
Okay. Great, thank you very much. I think that's, I think those are all of my questions, we have more with-
I'll just follow that up since we have asked this of other candidates, and what, what would you expect to get in terms of a size of an applicant pool for a district like ours?
[laughing] If you'd asked me that about ten years ago, I'd have said about sixty, sixty-five. Not happening anymore. And particularly this year, it's, it is tough. Dave already mentioned how many superintendents are retiring. I would hope for twenty-five someplace in that area. If we could get thirty-eight, in one of our last searches we did, that's even better. It's really, though, the quality that's included in that that's probably more important to me. I can tell you right now, you're going to, you would get, Santa Barbara will get a very rich field of candidates, but some of them are going to be people that you probably wouldn't want to employ, for a variety of reasons.
I also want to say, your, your timing is impeccable. When I said eighty to a hundred, that's what's going to happen. But to your credit, as a community and as a district and Dr. Sarvis- But, to your credit, as a community, and as a district, and Dr. Sarvis, as you worked together on this, to get started ahead of the wave. If you were, if we were standing here, and we were having this discussion latter part of March, first part of April, it would be a much, much different discussion. But, kudos to you, your timing is perfect.
Just an aside, when Dave and I had black hair, and started as superintendents, the applicant pool in those days would be about a hundred and fifty applicants for every job.
At least you had hair.
[laughing] I guess I should be grateful for that, huh?
Times have changed.
Absolutely.
One more question.
Oh, Mr. Herron?
It's not the snow on the roof, it's the fire in the heart.
Okay. In your agreement that you have in your package, point number two talks of, in the interest of orderly and timely process, you may, in your discretion, but after consulting with us, limit the number and time of such community meetings or forums and stuff. What would trigger you saying, hey, we're done, we're not doing anymore?
You know, in all the years we've been doing that, we've never exercised that clause. I suppose, if you were to say, we want ten community forums, one every night for the next week, and however many days, three days, we'd probably say, gee, do you really need that many, and have a chat about that, but that's never really been an issue.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, and one more question, Ms. Lamont.
You talked about doing Spanish and English forums. Do you have a third associate? Who would that be? How would that be facilitated?
Well, we have associates that are bilingual, and in the intake process, they would be involved in that, if you felt you wanted that, and I understand you do, so we would bring them in. We have, well, I can name them, but the point is, we have them.
So, it would be a third entity that probably wouldn't be working as much with the both of you?
No, they'd come in just for the community intake portion of it. Remember, we said earlier, when we come to the table, we bring a full team? We mean that. We have people that are screeners, we have people that are, you know, that do screening and are bilingual, and it goes on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Any more questions from the board? No, I think that's complete. Thank you so much for taking the time to submit a proposal, and it was quite thorough for us, and thank you for taking the time to come here to present to us tonight. We anticipate making a decision fairly quickly, so you should be hearing from us very soon.
All right, thank you so much. It was nice to have met all of you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you. Yes, we've had a request to take a short break, again, having kind of sat through another series of presentations. So, let's take a ten-minute break, and then we will come back and deliberate. Thank you. And we will get started with our discussions. I'm not sure quite how we want to maneuver through this, but I do want to share some of the information that I, but mostly Susan, was able to find out through follow-up of these firms. So, I'm just going to read you what she's written. Leadership associates, and she wrote, they are my top choice, so they were her top choice based on references, and the fact they have the most experience with districts like ours and their networking resources. One of the two proposed associates is Spanish bilingual, Reedie Townsend is universally praised, especially high marks for no-nonsense professionalism, and for skill in taking the board's direction and implementing it. I personally do not think the My Caston connection is a downside, and I would not want to eliminate a firm simply because of a few local detractors. I spoke to board presidents or members of San Ynez, Montecito, Santa Maria, Galita, Santa Clara. Last one liked the process, praised the professionalism, but a year later, the board has become split on the effectiveness of the new superintendent, so that was a negative. I talked to two board members, but they were both in the negative camp. Should probably follow up with a board member who likes the new superintendent. Interestingly, they were hiring because they had, quote, "run the last superintendent out on a rail." So, that's leadership associates. Ray and Associates, a tie for second choice. I spoke to past and present board presidents in both Sacramento and Oakland, and they both were positive. According to Mimi's research, they do have a bilingual associate. Roy Grimes, a former Sacramento board president, said they were very good, the district did the contract on their own, he recommends separate legal counsel for this. Ray and Associates worked quickly and assembled national candidates. One note, Sacramento insisted that the firm's principal, Gary Ray, be their lead. He is not one of the ones proposed for us. And then she included correspondence from the Oakland board president. It says, in which he is positive, but I did note the caveats towards the end. So, he says, thanks for calling. Anyway, I can say that Ray and Associates was very responsive and professional, we were able to maintain confidentiality, we had a good set of semifinalists, we asked for a public session for the community on the top three, and they helped to set that up and manage it. They tailored the process to what we wanted and needed, and they had quite, and we had quite a contentious school board. I was impressed that they were able to field a national list of candidates. We had hefty discussions in closed session that were very helpful. Probably, we could have used more help with the contract negotiations with our choice. Having said that, I'm not sure that they were any better than any others, but at the time, they were eager to get business in California, so we got a good rate from them, and high-quality service. I would recommend them. In sum, it would be, oh, innovative choice, this is Susan again speaking, an innovative choice for us and might result in an interesting pool. The downside is lack of experience in California, except for two very large urban districts, albeit diverse ones. Both of their searches in Oakland and Sacramento appear to have netted strong superintendents, but not likely we could afford folks like that. I'm a little concerned about the contact piece, for, I think she meant the contract piece. For that reason, and because Sacramento did the contract on their own, and Oakland says they could have used more help on this. Dave Long, second choice, again, based on the fact that I was able to speak to multiple references and they were positive. William Dietrich was also universally praised. Off-board, one board member said that one of their staff who had applied, so one of the staff members from that district who had applied, had been coached, which was concerning. There was another concern about whether reference checks, check process was thorough enough, which was interesting, because they talked about thoroughness of their reference checks. Unclear why Hope was not listed. On the other hand, multiple districts had used them twice, and went back to them a second time because of good experience in the process, and the superintendent chosen the first time. California experience might trump national firms. The team is a spin-off of CSBA program, has bilingual associate. I spoke to board presidents or members at Rosemont, Marietta, Paramount, and all very happy with the process and selection outcome. Then Hazard and Young was one we had the least information about. Says, not having checked references here, but not comfortable ranking, although the proposal is professional off the record, I heard second-hand from two districts that they were less than impressive. They interviewed with Juanecito, and I heard Oxnard felt they did not allow board enough latitude in crafting the interview questions. I thought it was telling that the Oxnard board president, who is a friend of mine, would not return my phone calls regarding this firm. So, I don't know what that says, but I'm certainly cautious about what it might say. So, that's kind of what we have for those. So, do we want to start with our individual rankings? Do we want to discuss the firms first? What would be the preference of the board?
I don't have an individual ranking right now, so...
Okay.
I might not be helpful in that.
Okay, so, why don't we start with some discussion, then? Because maybe, maybe we need a little bit of conversation in order to help us formalize our opinions about these. So, shall we start, then, with Ray and Associates? What were maybe some of the strengths?
I had one question about leadership associates.
Okay.
You know, they flat-out said, don't hire us if you want a community forum.
Yes.
And so, I guess my question is, what is our feeling about community forums?
I'm glad you raised that, because that is sort of, I think, a good starting point, since it would rule them out if we decide we do want the community forum. So, what is, what is the board's preference on that?
I'm happy to jump in on that. I'm all in favor of regular community forums. I want to differentiate between the two processes, and they were talking about a process where you have finalist candidates come, and sort of...
That's what I was referring to.
Yeah, and pass judgment, and I feel like, in the reading that I've done, and in the presentations we've heard, that it would, although clearly it can work, it would limit our number of candidates, and I just don't feel like we have that sort of luxury. And so, I would not be in favor of doing anything that narrowed our candidate pool.
I actually...
Ms. Lamont?
I'm not sure that I would like to see one, but I would like to work with an entity that is open to some flexibility in hearing input from the board and the community as well. I think for me, it would, in the ideal world, I would like to hear what the community and the stakeholders want before making that decision, and knowing that they're not flexible is a little bit of a deterrent for me, so, yeah.
So, I guess my question would be, is that kind of a deal-breaker for you?
As of right now, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, to think about leaving that off the table from day one without input puts us in a negative position. You know, whether it's an actual deal-breaker, based upon what else we talk about, it's a high deterrent to me at this moment.
I would have to concur with that. And again, I think, maybe the two of you are saying the same thing, I would like, I mean, I'm certainly leaving for myself open the possibility that we would not do one, if it, because they do make a compelling argument about the issue of confidentiality, and why some sitting superintendents might very ethically be concerned that it would do damage to their district to have it known that they were actively seeking another position. So, I can certainly see perhaps reaching the conclusion that it's not appropriate to do. But, I too hesitate to take it off the table from day one, without any, without having the ability to maybe negotiate or discuss ways in which we might be able to do it that would not limit our pool. And that may be, that may be overly optimistic, maybe there is no way to do that. But, I hesitate to just, from the very beginning, say, no way, it's not going to happen. So, Ms. Parker, did you want to comment on that?
Well, just in that I have so many concerns about the other firms, that, to me, I think we have to take it all in context, because I, I mean, it's interesting to hear that input, but there are strings and weaknesses for every single one of the firms, so...
Well, since, I guess, we're not in a position at this point to determine, yes, we want a community forum, or no, we're willing to give it up, maybe we should just go back to the original idea of just looking at the strengths and weaknesses of each of the firms. So, if we would, were to start with Ray and Associates, what would be the strengths that we might see from them?
Do you want to start?
You can go ahead. Can we do strengths and weaknesses at the same time?
Sure.
I'll just go down my list. I liked their proposal. I liked their survey. I liked how they create a profile. I liked the fact that we, they would have a forum with the top candidates if we want it. I liked their offer of compensation.
I'm sorry.
When you say you liked their offer of compensation...
That they would help us decide compensation.
Okay.
They had a paragraph in their proposal about it. And I really liked the way they gave their references with the school district, the size, contact information. It was the most complete proposal from that standpoint, if you were going to check all those references. So, those are my basic comments on that.
Oh, and the bilingual part, they had a very strong bilingual section.
I guess I wasn't on for all that, was I? Real fast. Proposal I liked, the survey I liked, their creation of profile I liked, their forum, willingness to have a forum if we want it, the help they offered for compensation package, and their references I thought were extremely well-done. And I liked the fact that they did have a bilingual section, or a bilingual person, and they mentioned it.
Okay, were there any weaknesses that you saw?
The fact that they're not California, and that they only have two, and as was mentioned, they're very large, so they don't have a track record in California, and that, to me, is a big weakness.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Lamont, did you want to add, but you see as the strengths and weaknesses?
In addition to what's been mentioned, I also liked their placement, they talked about forty-three percent placement, are of diverse candidates, and I thought that that was very admirable. I also think that I liked the fact that they communicated that they would be here as much as needed versus gave us a certain amount of days that they would be here. I thought that that was a good thing, and I did like also that they were willing, like others, to advise us on developing a contract, and that was part of their services. So, in addition to what's been said, those were things that I noted. And, yes, the biggest kind of challenge is that, they actually have three, California, Ontario, Montclair, Sacramento, and Oakland, and I would have liked to have seen more and more like our district, so that was probably my corner.
I had ranked the search firms, and Ray and Associates was third on my list. And I agree with the strengths that other board members have brought up, but to me, there were two, Ray and Associates and Dave Long, where I really didn't feel like, even in their presentation, they had done the research on our district, and didn't know our district as well as, as I would have liked to see in candidates, candidate firms coming before the board. And then it was huge to me that they have only done three searches in California, and that they're essentially seeking to expand a Western presence, but they don't have it, and they have not worked with a district our size.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll add mine. One of the things that I, a lot of the things that, one of the other things that I saw as the strengths from them was their two-year guarantee, whereas the others all gave a one-year guarantee. And I suppose maybe that's, you know, could be mitigated, because if it's working after a year or through a year, it's probably going to be working for two. But, I just thought that that was a nice cushion.
May I comment on that?
Yes.
You've got to remember, I think they all said, if the board doesn't change, and we have an election before the two years are up.
Right. They didn't specifically say that, but I can maybe infer that they would have that same caveat, or that same restriction as well. So, you're right. Then I think as far as... Then I think as far as the, I really appreciated that one of the people that they brought here and that we anticipate would be working with their group is not just bilingual, but also bicultural. And I thought that was very positive. I think for me, again, the main drawback is the lack of experience in California. And that, but that is relatively a large drawback because the California schools can be so different. So we seem to have looked at, you know, them pretty much, their biggest downside is California. So are there any other things that we want to focus on? I, I just want to point out that I also really agreed with one of the things that Ms. Lamont mentioned, which was that they were the ones who said they would be here as long as we needed them. And all the other firms put a, put a time limit, and that frightened me for some of the other, other firms. So, okay. Shall we look then at Hazard, Young, and Atiya?
I'll be happy to start on that one. And so I, I was, they were my number two firm, so I was distressed to hear what both you and Susan had sort of come out, or, or lack of information, which is, is very concerning. I thought, I appreciated that they had clearly done the research on the, on our district. Lot of strengths in terms of seeking diverse applicants. They've clearly had a lot of successful searches. But also now it seems like there are some, you know, questions about if they're always successful, which I guess I wouldn't necessarily assume. One thing that I didn't like about, I guess, about either Ray and Associates or Hazard, Young, and Atiya, and that was that they, neither one of them sent their full team. And so I felt like we were only getting a piece of the picture. And so that was a bit of a downside for them. My other downside was that I didn't feel like that they did enough in terms of helping figure out compensation packages and giving guidelines. It seemed like they left a few things kind of more up to the board than the other search firms did.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I captured your strengths, because I think I missed maybe one or two. One of the strengths you said was that you appreciated the research they did on our district, and then also the outreach or the connections they have for the candidates to draw, to recruit the candidates. There were some others, a couple of
Well, specifically that it was a, you know, they clearly have a national, the ability to do national outreach for diverse candidates.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Lamont, would you like to go next?
Yeah. I, I think that they outlined, they did the, for me, they did the best in outlining the board's responsibilities versus their responsibilities. I think that they spent some good time there. And for some reason though, I'm trying to pin down and articulate exactly why I wasn't convinced by them besides the Oxnard feedback we got. And I'm not sure, I can actually point at it, but I was not completely sold. And going into it, they were actually on the, not the top, but towards the top of my list, so, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Herron?
This one, I also very much liked their survey. In fact, the way they break it down by up to five different groups and their 32 characteristics. It was, that was a, a good part of it for me. Again, I liked their references. I didn't care for their presentation, her presentation, that much. She was wishy-washy on the Oxnard situation. In fact, I, I got the feeling she was wishy-washy a lot of parts of her presentation. I did like the fact that two Spanish members on the team. That'll do it.
Okay.
If I can chime back in on this one. I, I also really felt with both Ray and Associates and with HYA, that they were probably misrepresenting the number of applicants that we would get that would be viable candidates. And so for them both, you know, when the, when the really experienced Californian firms are saying, "You can expect 20 or 25," and then we have these other firms saying, "Oh, you'll get 50," I just felt like that was, it's probably, maybe we'd get 50 applicants if you do a, you know, really thorough national search, but is it 50? You know, is it, does it end up being 25 of those candidates are so low quality that it just counts in the number? So that was a concern.
Okay. For me, I'll have to say, I had a sense of rigidness. First of all, as I asked her about modifying the survey, she said that we could not modify the survey because it's already set up, which made me concerned that most of the other firms, and even in, in other parts of their presentation, there was a focus on really tailoring the search to the needs of the individual district. And so it worried me that there would be this survey that we would be expected to use, or at least maybe encouraged to use, that we couldn't change at all. And then, maybe because I was sensitive to that, I was also sensitive to when we asked if we, if we would see all the apps or not. The answer was, "We can if we want to." But I felt like there was almost a, an insinuation that we really wouldn't need to. So that worried me. And then also, when talking about the, the community forums, she said that they would give us a list of possible groups, et cetera, staff, whatever, and we could tell them which ones we wanted them to look at. And again, that felt a little prefabbed for me, you know, like, kind of like the survey. Like, okay, we have our standard list of people that we might want to talk to, and you tell us which ones then we should contact, rather than generating it from us. So that made me a little nervous. On the other hand, I thought the fact that they had done research on our, on our district was great. I thought to come in here knowing something about our mission statement, some of our data, was really suggested that they were, would do their homework and get to know what we would need. So, yeah, that was probably, oh. The other thing was, and I, I really don't know where, where to place this as a strength or a weakness, because I don't know whether this is a good thing or a bad thing. But they were the only ones who, maybe it's because I think that was, that they were the only ones that specifically asked this question, but they said they would not put a candidate in the poll that they had placed in the previous five years. And I'm just wondering if that would limit some of our candidates. So that was another thing for, for them.
I, I want to chime back in on that, on the online survey piece. I ended up being frightened, and we hadn't asked the question of, of Ray and Associates, but they also do an online survey, and I'm sure it's similar to theirs. If you can't control who's taking that survey, then frankly, it's meaningless.
I mean, there should be some controls. Even Survey Monkey has controls on IP addresses and so forth, and I was surprised she didn't talk about some controls.
Okay. So Leadership Associates?
No.
No, I'm sorry. Sorry. That was Hazard, Young, and Atiya. Now Leadership Associates. What were some of the strengths and weaknesses that we saw there? Who wants to jump in? Ms. Lamont?
I, I definitely like their California experience, and that counts for a lot. I like the fact that they know our area, they seem to know the area the best. And I also like the fact, and I guess this goes with Ray and Associates too, but the fact that the person who, the, the associate who would all, who would be involved in engaging with the Spanish-speaking community is part of the core team versus a third party. And I think that that makes a difference in the type of information that we solicit and the feedback that we might get. So that was, those were all pluses for me. Honestly, my biggest con is that they, from day one, I, I don't see as much flexibility with them. They offer a package deal. And without knowing what the board might want, or what the stakeholders might want, it's pretty much a no. So that was my biggest con.
All right. Ms. Parker?
I, I felt like that was the one thing that they were not flexible on, and that it was about the, you know, if you want to have the, the candidates come for, you know, your, your top two or three candidates come and be interviewed, that that is absolutely the one thing that they would not do. And to me, that, that wasn't a con at all, because just everything I see, everything I read indicates that that's probably a bad idea. And so that, that really didn't concern me. I did see as their strengths, the fact that we've been able to gather so much personal information from board members that have actually used them and had positive experiences. And I, I think I shared last time that I was a reference on one of their searches. It was incredibly professional and exactly the kind of thing that I think that we would want for our own district. I appreciate that if we don't want a particular consultant to be even part of the process at all, that they're very willing to just make that part of their conditions. And again, I agree with Ms. Lamont that it's great for them to have a Spanish speaker as part of the core team, and they just obviously have very extensive California experience.
Okay. Mr. Herron?
What I found interesting is, both with Leadership and Long, if you went with either one of them, it's because of, it's not because of their proposal. I don't think Leadership Associates has a very good proposal. It's all in the presenters who were extremely good. And so you're, and, and the, the fact that they've done so much here, they know our community, I mean, there was just a feel that they were a very quality organization, and they do a quality job, but it's not because of anything they presented to us factually. Again, the, I think biggest con is the fact that they say absolutely no community forum. And that's still an issue with me. But other than that, and obviously, my comments from last week, and it's been brought up tonight, is the, the willingness for this board to take some flak from some members of the community, regardless of what everybody says about participating or not participating, we will take flak. As long as we're willing to take that flak and live with it, that's, that's okay.
Okay. Well, I would, I would echo a lot of what you said. I thought certainly their, their California experience, but also their relatively local experience was a big, a big plus. So that, that I felt, I could feel comfortable feeling like they knew something about our district as well as our type of district. I'm trying to think of... I, I also liked the idea that they talked about the board receiving a comprehensive packet of information regarding references, that it wouldn't just be them checking the references and then sort of giving us a summary of it, that they would actually give us a packet of all the information that they had found out. I thought that was, was very good. I also thought that the, that they seemed like they were willing to help a lot on the contract, even though they said, you know, "We don't negotiate, we're not lawyers." But they clearly indicated that they would be involved in helping to work with the contract. Again, for me, probably the, the two things that, that Mr. Herron pointed out, actually, maybe all three of them, there are no forum. I think the issue of Mike Caston is significant. There are segments of the community for whom that will be a, a big concern. And I worry that it could carry over into acceptance or non-acceptance of our, of our candidates and whoever we ultimately hire. So I'm not sure that it's enough of a concern to say, "Don't hire them." But like, like Mr. Herron, I think it's something that we need to really just put on the table and recognize that it could, it could raise a lot of issues for us if we do. And then I also think that it was a weak proposal. I think part of the reason it was a weak proposal is because they were hesitant to apply at first. And I, I want, I, I guess I'm not comfortable with that. I feel like, I almost have the feeling that, that they sort of had to be talked into applying with us. And that makes me worry about how sincerely they would, you know, put their efforts into this, or, or why they were reluctant.
I didn't know that. Can you amplify a little bit?
Do you want to maybe explain that a little bit, Dr. Service?
Well, I didn't have any discussions with them, but, but Mimi had worked with the board president on it, and in the preliminary discussion, they had a reluctance because, as I recall, this is secondhand information, as I recall, because they had some notions about, about how Cam Sanchez was hired, about, yes, about the involvement of the libertarians on how the board would want to make it entirely open and public, and that they felt that they needed work in confidentiality with the board. Mimi, I believe, was successful in dispelling them that and said, you know, "This is a totally different landscape. That was years ago. You know, things have changed here tremendously." And it's a, I believe she said it was a very functioning, a high-functioning board. And they said, "Well, then, in that case, we will submit a proposal." It sounded like a strange discussion.
Yes. And my concern wasn't so much that they, that they had those concerns, because I can understand that, but that having, that, having done that, then I, they submitted what I agreed was a weak proposal. I felt like it contained very little in specifics, very little real discussion of what their, their process would be. And so I wasn't sure how to interpret that, whether it was just because, having dragged their feet, they were, you know, short on time then, and so they didn't put as much detail and so they didn't put as much detail into it, or whether it reflected sort of a, maybe a questionable commitment to this process.
I don't know. I mean, I guess we could have asked them that, but I just figured that different companies have different ways of presenting, and that's kind of what the second round is to go into detail on.
Yeah, and I do want to be fair to them. I think, I agree, I also agree with the positive for them. I think they did do a very thorough and clear job of presenting. So it was much clearer once they presented it to us.
If I was going to deal with any of the people we talked to tonight, those would be the two I would deal with from Leadership Associates.
Okay. Do you want to move forward on that then? Our final group that we heard from, Dave Long and Associates. What are our strengths and weaknesses for them? Ms. Parker?
I did put them last on my list, actually. And I think that they're very experienced in what they do, and I appreciate that. Again, I felt like this, they did not know our district. And that was clear from their presentation. And again, this is another one that actually I've had personal contact with. I've been a reference for this firm and had a very, I'll just say that Leadership Associates was much stronger in the way they handled their references.
Ms. Lamone?
I, what I liked was that they included in the contract a leadership transition meeting. So there was that post-decision-making kind of availability. I think what I didn't like is as much as they tried to convince us of all their experience, it was with different entities and it felt a little bit, like pieced together. And that was a little bit of a concern for me. I, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Mr. Herron?
I just, no comment. I can't support them.
Okay. I felt, I guess I just felt unconvinced by their presentation. I, at times, felt like they were giving conflicting answers to our questions. Like one person would give one answer and the other person would kind of say something different. And so I was, that worried me because I felt like I'm not sure I'm getting the, a clear story here. I too liked the leadership transition workshop idea. I thought that was, that was very good. I was, I guess it made me worry because I felt like they were, when they said in their proposal that they maintained two-year contact with the superintendent, it was stated as if it was sort of a formal situation and part of the proposal. And then it seemed like virtually nothing. They said, "If we see them at conferences, we'll talk to them." I thought, "Well, you would do that for longer than two years, wouldn't you?" That just seemed like, I felt like that was a real misrepresentation in their proposal of something that was ultimately meaningless. So that really worried me because it made me start to wonder whether that could be true of other aspects of the proposal. I also really worried that they had no letters of recommendation and they didn't, I didn't specifically ask them the question, but I told them it was a concern, and they didn't explain it. Especially after their discussion of how thoroughly they check letters of recommendation and how they want them to be current and et cetera. So that, again, had me a little worried. The other, but another thing that I did like is that they said that they would accompany us on a site visit if we wanted them to, which a number of the firms said they would not. And that they have the, they use the outside screeners for some of the background checks. But again, that sounded good. I'm not sure, I don't know enough about that process to know if that's really significantly better than using the in-house personnel that some of the other firms might have, might have been using. I appreciated that they said they don't support the idea of forms, but they would be willing to work with us if we wanted to do them. So, yeah, I think that was pretty much it for me. Hearing some of our concerns about their weaknesses and hearing Mr. Herron's statement that he would not support them, should we eliminate them from consideration at this point? Are we willing to do that?
I would be willing to.
Yes.
Okay. So let's just take them off the table for now. And that brings it to three. Ray and Associates, Hazard and Young, and Leadership and Associates. So I guess for Ray and Associates, we had a number of strengths. We had really only one major, major weakness. We had a couple of other less serious ones. But our one major one is their lack of California experience, which is major. So I'm not sure how we feel about that, if we are prepared to remove them from consideration because of that, or if we still want to keep them in consideration.
I think HYA would be the second one to be dropped from the consideration.
HYA, okay.
Before Ray.
Before Ray, okay, okay.
You know, and normally I would not agree with you on that, Mr. Herron, but because HYA has so much more California experience, I don't know.
Well, I have to say, I thought it was telling that Oxnard did not take them up on their guarantee, did not bring them back in to do the second search when their hire did not work out. You know, so that would indicate a real lack of satisfaction with how things went the first time. That, I appreciated your asking that question, Ms. Parker, because that, to me, that was very telling.
It is telling, although, you know, again, when you have hundreds of searches, I hate to focus too much on one district, especially one where we actually haven't had any contact.
Correct. I understand that.
I would actually support Mr. Herron's kind of suggestion to drop HYA. They were not on the top of my list. On the top of my list is Ray and Associates and Leadership Associates. I also think, take away the Oxnard, yes, they have a lot of California experience, but at the end of the day, I'm also thinking, who is this board going to work well with? And based on their presentation, I wasn't convinced that. I mean, mind you, she was one of three that was here, but based on that, I'm not sure that she would be the best fit. Or they.
Well, thank you for bringing that up again, Ms. Lamone, because again, it comes down to not seeing that whole team. So I feel like, you know, not even seeing a second member of the team is concerning.
Yeah, I have to say, repeat what I said at the beginning, at the outset with this one. I really just felt a sense of inflexibility with them. I felt like a lot of things were already set up, were sort of, sort of a, I don't want to say a cookie-cutter approach, because I think that's too harsh. I think there was probably a little more flexibility in that. But the survey's already set up. She's, you know, the number of subgroups that you can divide it into is already set up. There's already a very clear sort of process and approach. And I didn't hear a lot of willingness to change that or accommodate district issues around that. So I think I would be inclined to remove them as well.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Well, we've got it down to two. We've got it down to Ray and Associates and Leadership Associates, or Leadership Associates. And I think on these two, we have very clearly with Ray and Associates, their big drawback is the lack of California experience. On Leadership Associates, the no-community forum.
I think we really need to be clear, it's no candidate forum.
Thank you. No candidate forum. You know, and possibly the issue of the former superintendent, to the extent that that is an issue or not. So do we have, do we want to make a, does anyone have an argument to be made for one over the other?
I just, in this case, I feel more comfortable going with the firm with the track record that I can look at for California. I feel like if we were going to get a lot of flak from the community, that we probably already would have had it. And so far, all I've heard is a little bit of gossip. And I just don't feel like I can make a decision around that, particularly when I think we could make a request not to have that particular associate as part of the process.
Was Leadership Associate Mrs. Deacon's first choice?
Yes. And Ray and Associates was, she said a tie for second.
Tie with who? With Hazard?
With Hazard, I believe. Oh, no, with Long, sorry, with Long. Ms. Lamone?
I really liked Leadership Associates. I liked their presentation. You know, this is going to go back to how we're going to interact with them and the fact that there's no flexibility, it's a tough one for me. It's a tough one for me because they spoke of successful candidate forums. I don't know that we want to or going to choose to have one, but a willingness to listen, to work with a board who might consider that and work through a process of thinking about it a little bit more strategically would have been something I would have really liked to have seen. And I don't, for me, it's also about setting the tone, and that's, at least with me, the tone that was left of, this is what we have, this is who we are, take it or leave it. And I would have liked to have seen at least some openness to work with us and think through a process that I think could be useful. But again, I'm not convinced that needs to happen. I just would have liked that. And it's setting a tone for the type of relationship that we would have with the board. But I will say that the, the kind of the background information, and it seems like other school districts have been very, very happy. So I want to take that into consideration, that they've expressed the opposite. But I, I want to base it on the information that's being given to us versus a lot of other things, because then we are going to get into the, you know, the bias and all that stuff, so, yeah.
Is that public comment in front of you, or is that? No?
Can I chime back in on that piece? And that is that three of the four firms said that we would lose candidates if we did a candidate forum. And I think Leadership Associates was the most blunt in that they were not going to do that. But three of the four essentially said, "Not a good idea." So I appreciate that Ray and Associates was flexible about it. And I think that, you know, it could work in a place like Oakland or Sacramento. But I don't think, I guess in a way, it almost worried me that, that... Well, I guess they had concerns about it too, so I don't want to minimize their own concerns about the process. You know, they said, they said they could go either way.
I find this really a difficult choice between them because they have different kinds of strengths. If Ray and Associates had had the California experience and the kind of, sort of responses, feedback, positive feedback that we've gotten for Leadership Associates, I would, I would feel very strongly in their favor. But I, I guess I feel like leader, it concerns me that Leadership Associates said they will not do the candidate forum. And as I said earlier, that inflexibility worries me. But I did feel like they had other areas in which they were flexible. So there's, you know, there's, this is really tough. I don't feel like I have a clear preference on these. It also concerned me that Leadership Associate, when asked, I think, Mr. Herron, you asked them how much time they plan to spend in the community. They didn't give an actual number. They said, you know, "A day here, a couple of days there." It sounded like they were talking about three or maybe four days.
What concerned me is that in the contract, you know, they say they can limit the time.
Yeah.
That seems like a dumb thing to put in the contract. You know, it's almost like a red, waving a red flag. And especially when they say, and I forget what the exact wording, but at their discretion, I think this is the one, right? Or is that somebody else?
No, that was somebody else. That was David Long and Associates, yeah.
David Long, okay, forget it.
It did worry me that, though, that they did indicate that it would, sounded like it was going to be around three days, maybe four. And Ray and Associates said, "Pretty much as long as we needed them." I certainly liked that answer better. Ms. Herron?
If we take a vote and it's two to two, I'll switch my vote to vote with Susan Deacon for Leadership Associates. But if it's three to, three to one or four to zero, with Ray, that's fine with me too. But I will, if necessary, vote on the side of Susan Deacon, because that would probably make three votes.
Okay. Do we want to have any further discussion about this? Are there, do we think there's any points that we've missed? Anything that might tip us one way or the other that we haven't looked at yet?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Herron?
That we contract with Ray and Associates.
I'd like to second that.
Okay. It's been made and seconded to contract with Ray and Associates? Any further discussion on that? No? Okay. Then, I'm hesitating calling the question because I'm trying to figure out how I'm going to vote. Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. Motion carries, three to one. So we have a firm, and I just hope we have made the right choice. So, thank you all. I know this was a tough decision, a long night, and we'll do it again next week. Thank you for those in the audience who stayed to hear all of this. With that, we, I, we don't have anything at the end of our agenda today, do we? Nope.
I would like to thank you for chairing a very, very good meeting.
Oh, thank you. Okay, well, with that, we can adjourn the meeting.